Okay, it's seven o'clock.
It is. It has been stolen.
Hmm.
What is that? Probably used for a commercial.
What do you know? Is that microphone going to be live?
I'm assuming that one's live, so.
This one's live.
No, the one on the counter there.
Yes. I think it's green light, so. Oh, that one, I'm sorry.
We actually want the green light off now.
Okay.
Well, that will have to do.
Okay.
Yeah.
So. I apologize.
Is it probably live on that?
Will this work?
Oh, that's good.
Okay.
It'll do it. Okay, it is 7:01. Are you ready, Michael? Okay. I'd like to call to order the November 11th, 2021, meeting of the Waukegan Planning and Zoning Commission. Can we have a roll call, please?
Anderson?
Here.
Here.
Griffin? Grimes?
Here.
Bell?
Here.
Hints?
Here.
Rivera?
Present.
Santiago? Oops. Rodriguez?
Here. Okay, we do have a quorum. Um, next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the October 14th, 2021 meeting.
Still moved. Grimes?
Motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Okay, second by Commissioner Bill. Any comments, corrections, or changes to the minutes? Now, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Hints?
Yes.
Bell?
Yes.
Grimes?
Yes.
Bell?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Rivera?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes. Motion carries. Minutes are approved. Okay. Teddy? All right, stop. Check your. Far one. Okay. All right. Next item is item 3.0, Audience Time. This is an opportunity for anyone who would like to address the commission on any subject matter that is not on tonight's agenda. Okay? As we discuss the items that are on the agenda, anybody who wants to speak out concerning the requests will be allowed to speak. But right now, this is an opportunity for anybody who would like to address the commission on any item that is not on the agenda. Is there anybody here who would like to speak to the commission? Okay, moving on. Next item, item four, Old Business. I don't believe we have any old business to discuss. Is there anything that I don't know about? No? Okay. Good. Item five, New Business. Moving to zoning calendar number 20... Uh, it's five... Item 5.1, zoning calendar number 2640. That is a request by the petitioner, Global Security Transportation LLC and 2717 Delaney Road LLC for a conditional use permit for a recreational cannabis transporting organization for the location known as 2755 North Delaney Road. Okay, who will be presenting this request? You are, sir? Oh. Who will be presenting on this? Okay, are you the only one that will be speaking regarding this?
Yes.
Okay, please come forward. There is a microphone. We don't have the podium today. For some reason, it seems to have walked away. But we do have a microphone set up on the counter there, and it's important that you speak into the microphone because we want to make sure that everything that anybody says at the meeting is recorded, okay? This is being recorded for the record. So, uh, I'd like you to raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Okay, please start by stating your name and your affiliation to the project and proceed with your presentation.
My name is Mark McGee Hall. I'm the owner of Global Security Group Transportation LLC.
You can't hear.
Is that better?
No.
Is it on?
Mike's not on.
How's that? Is that better?
You made it third try, right?
Right, exactly. Well, happy Veterans' Day to everybody.
If you're a veteran, thank you.
I am a veteran, yes. So, um, it's been a long, long journey trying to get a license with the state of Illinois, but it finally came through for us, uh, for the cannabis transportation license, uh, and we're seeking to do operation up here in Waukegan, um, at this location at 2755 North Delaney Road. As our application states and through the state law, no cannabis will be housed or, um, brought to this location at any time. It is strictly just the transportation administration side of the business. So what we will have at the building would be just, um, possibly a vehicle or two, um, if we don't have the drivers take the vehicles home because it's more, uh, operational-wise, it's better for us to actually have the drivers take the vehicles home, uh, so they can be dispatched in the morning out to wherever they need to be. What will be housed at this location will be just the administration side, uh, where the state police requires us to have all our, um, affidavits and our, uh, transportation logs, uh, that we house there digitally-wise. Um, and then also our dispatch would be there as well. Um, so there would probably be about, uh, four or five, uh, possibly people in and out of the office, uh, working on the administration side of it. So, um, is there any questions that I could answer in reference to how the cannabis transportation actually works in the state of Illinois?
Well, yes, I'd like to explain.
Yeah, I'd like to hear. I'm sorry?
Yes, I'd like to explain that, please.
Okay, so how it works is, um, it's either... It's either a, uh, a craft grower company or a cultivation company or a dispensary would call us up and ask us to pick up a product for them and deliver it to, uh, from point A to point B. The state laws, uh, straight... Uh, clearly states that we're... At no time can we stop off, uh, to area C. Uh, we have to go from A to B immediately, drop the product off, uh, take the manifest, um, have it signed off by the other... By the people that are taking the product, uh, after we get the manifest from the people that we're receiving it from. Uh, once it's dropped off, it's logged, and then, um, the driver moves on to his next location as well. Um, all of our vans are equipped with GPS monitoring. They have live-stream cameras inside and outside of the vehicles as well. Uh, there is panic buttons inside the vehicles. Uh, the vehicles do have, uh, and all the officers that would be driving in the vehicle as well, uh, have radios on them as well. So, um, our drivers are not... Are required to be armed security officers. Um, they are in plain clothes, though, uh, so they... Everything is concealed. They will have the identification from the state of Illinois, from the Department of Agriculture, along with the departments, which is our company's IDs as well, on them at any times. Um, our rules and regulations are strictly right from what the Illinois Department of Agriculture wants and what the Illinois State Police wants. Uh, anytime that they're stopped, we have a protocol, uh, on what they actually have to present to the, uh, Illinois State Police or any other local agency that stops them. So, um, but at no time... I just want to iterate that, that no time does product come to this location at all. So, no cannabis products.
Okay. Any of the... Do you have questions of the petitioner?
I have one question.
Mr. Rivera?
I don't know if this is... Uh, the vans, you say there are two vans. You probably wanted to do...
We're starting off with two vans because we don't know the market yet in Illinois. We were actually one of the first people to get the transportation licenses. Uh, there's no company that's actually actively working. I've been out to California, and I've been out to Arizona, and I've been out to, uh, Colorado as well, trying to figure out their things that they've... They've been doing, but they've been so long down into the process that it's, um, the, uh...
Right.
It's such a new thing here for the state of Illinois. We don't even know what we're getting our hands into right now, so...
Are these vans... Are they unmarked?
Yes, they are unmarked. They are, uh, efficient, uh, fuel-efficient vans. Uh, they are the small Ford Connects, brand-new Ford Connects.
Thank you.
Any other questions, uh, from the petitioners? I mean, from the commissioners? Mr. Grantz?
Mr. Quirk, we had one. I know Mrs. David Durson's wife was a part of it. It was going to be up there by Bowen Park, a facility. Did that ever take off, or did that...
Could you speak in here, Mike?
Oh, I'm sorry. We had an approval. Uh, Dave Durson's wife, like, was a part of the...
Yes, her dad is a rower.
Yes. So are they active? Are they functioning now?
They don't have a license yet.
Okay, they've been approved, though, so would that be someone he would trans...
They could be.
Yes, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. I'd like to ask if there's anybody here who would like to speak out either in support of this request or in opposition to this request? Okay? In that case, I'd like to ask, uh, staff for their up-to-the-minute recommendation.
Do you want to read that one objection?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, yes.
I just dropped it on you.
Yes, you just dropped it on me, and I should have, uh, read it right away. Um, we have one letter of objection here that was just handed to me. From Mark Taglod at 37138 North Delaney Road in Gurnee, Illinois. Has the wrong zip code, 60631. That would be Chicago, 60031. And her objection says, "Dislike the idea of having this near my house." And that's the only objection we have, right? There were no other letters, no other phone calls, anything else?
Correct.
Okay, and I will give this back to you since it's the only one... Only copy we have. All right, in that case, now, uh, would the city please give their, uh, position on this?
Yeah.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you as always, and good evening to the public. Uh, my name is Thomas Mailard. I am working on behalf of the Planning and Zoning Department and prepared the staff report related to this application. We believe that this is a fairly straightforward application, much in part due to the regulations already provided by the state police and through the state legislature in that process. Uh, this is, as you've heard, a office use. There are not vehicles there, you know, relates there. It's a fairly small, um, footprint nonetheless, by the ordinance of the city code, uh, is required to come to you, and, um, we have laid out, uh, some fairly standard, uh, conditions, including review of the security plan by the police chief. Uh, the applicant has provided that already for the chief to review, and he has some time to, uh, review that. Um, he, uh, also, the staff recommended, as again by state law, that no, uh, product can be on the site. Um, and I'm happy to answer any other questions related to this.
Do any of the Commissioners have questions for city staff?
Maybe just one from you, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Hints.
I guess if, if there is no cannabis on the site, what's... Um, why would we need a conditional use, or why wouldn't you just... Why wouldn't you change the zoning ordinance to allow it, I guess, maybe if that's the state law?
When the city council passed the ordinances related to adult-use recreational cannabis, they made all of them conditional uses so that they had the opportunity, because it was new, they'd never been presented anything, they wanted to have the opportunity to review these. I would expect that this might be the one that might be made a permitted use in certain areas when it operates in this fashion. But having the conditional use gives both the Planning and Zoning Commission and the city council the oppor... The opportunity to just check and make sure that it is simply an office use in the location.
Okay, because it's the first one, essentially, you're saying?
Yes. But the city... The city code requires any cannabis-related use to be a conditional use.
Okay, thanks.
Sure.
Okay, are there any other questions from the Commissioners, either for city staff or for the petitioner? No, in that case, I would like to ask for a motion to either recommend approval or denial of this request.
Mr. Chair, I recommend approval of zoning calendar 2640, uh, for Global Security Transportation for a conditional use permit for a recreational cannabis transportation organization.
Recommendation to, uh, to recommend approval by Commissioner Hints, second by Commissioner Rivera.
I second.
Any further discussion on this motion? If not, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Hints?
Yes.
Bell?
Yes.
Grimes?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Rivera?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes. Motion carries. Congratulations, good luck with your project.
Good luck to you.
The next step will be, uh...
The next step will be the Community Development Committee of City Council, which will be on Monday, December 6th, in this room between 5:00 and 7:00 PM. I think it's 5:00 PM that night. And then the full city council two weeks later.
Thank you very much. Okay. Our next item on the agenda, there are actually two different calendar items, but I believe they're for the same project. So, um, I'm going to ask, when we... When we ask for the presenter to come forward, I'm going to ask you to present, um, your request for both items, but we will vote on them individually since they are separate, uh, calendar items. Okay, they are, uh, number 5.2, zoning calendar 2641, a request by the petitioner, Carlos Smith, for a text amendment to sections 8.5-4 and 13.2 of the Waukegan zoning ordinance allowing multipurpose entertainment establishment as a conditional use in the B4 district. And item 5.3, zoning calendar number 2642, which is a request by the petitioner, A Crazy Place LLC and Facet Holdings LLC, for a conditional use permit for a multipurpose entertainment establishment at the location known as 208 North Genesee Street. Who will be presenting? Are you the only one who will be speaking?
Yes, sir.
On this... Presenting on this?
Yes, sir.
Okay, do you have other people with you that might be commenting or...
Yeah, for sure.
Okay, then anybody who thinks that they might be... Anybody that is part of this project that feels that they may be commenting or may be asked to answer questions, I would like you to be sworn in right now, please.
Not to...
Just raise your hand.
Okay. Please raise your right hand. You can stay right there. And you also, sir. Um, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
Okay. As you, um, first of all, present your name, tell us your name, your affiliation to the project, and then go ahead and make your presentation.
Sure. Uh, my name's Carlos Smith, um, AKA Borlos Crazy. That's what they call me on the radio. Um, I, um, I'm the owner of The Crazy Place, along with my parents as well. Um, and, uh, the text amendment, I think we... We tackled the text amendment kind of uniquely because, uh, what we went into was, uh, having a unique-style business is kind of really, um, something that... Something that people have never seen before. So the, uh, previous, uh, parameters of what a business like mine would have, it would kind of... It would have restricted us, uh, one way or another if we would have chose what was already in place. So if what, uh, we would have chose one side, it would kind of restricted us on another side, and then another side, it would have restricted us on the other side. So what we did was we creatively came up with a description that kind of gave us a little bit... Well, a lot more leeway to, uh, have freedom in our space and be able to, uh, accommodate all the visions that we wanted to have. So that's why we went the text amendment route, um, to... To make sure that our business vision was, uh, not restricted and we could see it full through and be able to execute everything that we... We dreamed to have in this space. I don't know...
Is that the full presentation?
No. No, I was just... I was just tackling the text amendment because I know that was the first part.
Okay.
I could... If you want me to go to the second part of what the vision is, for sure.
I want the whole...
Gotcha, gotcha, gotcha. So, uh, A Crazy Place, uh, well, I... Before I get to that part, I actually... I'm the owner of The Crazy Riot Show. It's a podcast show that's located right here in Waukegan. We tackle a lot of different issues, a lot of different topics, uh, in the local area and national. Uh, we reached about a half a million people now, uh, something that we're really proud of. We've been doing that for about five years. Uh, and we've always dealt in dealing with youth and dealing with, uh, nightlife, dealing with, uh, parties and events and award shows and things like that. But we all... We've always rented out these spaces. We always went to other, uh, people to rent out, and... And we thought it was cool to kind of take our, uh, vision and take control of it fully. So what we did was, uh, we combined our studio experiences, what I mean by radio stations and, uh, podcasts, and we combined that event, uh, aspect and brought it together. So our event, uh, our venue is called A Crazy Place Studios and Venue. So in that, we have a radio station inside of our venue, and we also have a really cool space that people can rent out in, uh, for their private events or public events, uh, for us to facilitate our, uh, our community events, uh, our youth, uh, events that we do. And also, we're going to facilitate an intern program, internship program for certain students that want to get into arts and media, um, in our space downtown, uh, and also adults that, uh, deal in radio or want to be a disc jockey or things like that. So, uh, the entire space will feature selfie booths. It's kind of a new phenomenon where, uh, you walk into these rooms and it's really laid out really cool, and you're able to take some pictures. Um, we also will have, um, uh, different, uh, interactive activities in the space, like, uh, like video games and stuff like that for kids that... Who come in after school, we do after-school programming. Uh, but we also... We focus on, uh, a lot of, um, launching different brands. So we have different partnerships within... We've dealt with the city on a different... A few different things where, uh, maybe the mayor came on and, uh, launched her campaign or his campaign, or Alderman came on her. Anytime... Any person that's launching a product, we help them launch their product on our platform. So, let's say it's a local guy who's opened up a shoe store, and he wants to get to a different target market. Well, he'll come to us and say, "Carlos, how could you help us get new customers?" Because we already have a base or a population that he can... Or he or she can tap into. So these are the clients that we're dealing with, and they can launch out of our space. So they would throw an event that will... That would feature their product in that space where, uh, that person's customer comes to the location and sees what they may be selling or different versions of it. Um, and, and we launch them physically versus it being a social media campaign, which we do. We actually launch them physically in person from our location as well. So that's a big part of what we do in partnership, uh, with different municipalities or businesses, um, or politicians, yeah. I think that's it. I think that's it.
All right. Um, do any of the Commissioners have questions of the petitioner?
I probably have a question for Noel, you know, and as far as he had mentioned that they rent out space for certain events. Would they be required to get special permits every time they would rent space out?
Uh, the way this is drafted, it would allow them to, uh, to use that activity as part of this conditional use permit.
Okay.
Um, so they wouldn't need, like, a special events permit from the city as long as they were inside the facility.
Okay.
Now, if they did something outside on the street, that would have to go through the special events permit process.
Okay, very good.
But operations inside the facility would be covered under the conditional use permit.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from the Commissioners for the petitioner?
Yeah, um, food and beverage. I mean, you're not turning liquor or anything at this location.
Uh, we do... We do wish... We, uh, we do wish to require a liquor license. We do wish to have that in the space. Uh, food, not necessarily prepared in the location, as far as like a kitchen, uh, mostly like vendor, uh, vendor food coming into the location, not necessarily cooked in it, yeah.
Mr. Grantz?
Yeah, and if you read the synopsis that's in there, uh, he has to meet Lake County Health Department rules. I used to have a place, it's called Starboard, you know, Chicago, and we had to get a liquor license, went through the council, the whole nine yards. So everything has to be vetted, and he has to be... And if I may make a comment, Mr. President, if I'm not... Chairman, if I'm not out of order, Carlos has been doing this for a long time and doing it for free, if you will, in certain situations and helping people to launch businesses here in Waukegan. One example, if I might state, it stretches. He's having something there tonight. He DJs on the side, he doesn't charge. The main thing that turned me on was the young people, having something for our youth to do. If you guys can remember briefly, and I'll be short-winded, Hank Paragon, and may he rest in peace, my Alderman in the Third Ward, you know, had a vision. He had something up here by Ace Hardware, if you remember. It didn't last, but that was tried, you know? So this is something that's along those lines, but the beauty is, kids can come after school, they have a place to go, they'll have things to do. He has the reputation, so he talks their language, he... He walks the walk, and it's just totally beautiful to see how he operates and what he does. And now he's trying to be able to do more, but you have to be a little selfish, and you have to get paid in order to do those things. Thank you, Mr. [inaudible].
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, I have a question. Um, since there's such a broad scope of possible types of events that you can have in there, um, do we have any assurance that this is not going to turn into a nightclub-type of situation?
Well, sure. Um, we... When we sat down in our meetings, uh, and, again, to the... To speak to the text amendment, that was an option for us, right? Because it made more sense, and maybe in the beginning, when I explained it, it probably made sense where it's a banquet hall or it's a nightclub. And, and those were... That were in the meeting with me. I said, "I don't want to be a... I don't want to be a nightclub." And the reason why is because obviously, it's kind of a... It's kind of a dirty context when you use the word nightclub, even... Even 2021. I don't... That's not the field that we're going for. Uh, we're not trying to appease for it to be like something that is a nightclub. Um, we... We're looking to, um, facilitate healthy... Healthy and fun events in this space. And I know that sounds really cliche. I know that's what I'm supposed to say right now. But my reputation means a lot, and I know that attaching myself to something that will put people at risk, sure, late nights, 12 to 2, you're talking late, early mornings. We... We have a... Our integrity, our reputation means a lot, and we... And we want to make sure that we keep everybody safe and keep everybody, um, in... In the right, uh, taste of what we're trying to produce. So when you walk into this space, it's not going to feel like a nightclub, it's not going to sound like a nightclub. Um, of course, some of the events will be happening during the time of... That you would think that it's kind of like a club-type of feel, but, um, I do understand that dirty context that comes with a nightclub. I get it. And I do understand the apprehensiveness to say, "Well, yeah, let them do that." But I can... I'm guaranteeing you hear that. What we're going to do is... It's going to be in taste, it's going to be in pride, it's going to be connected to our integrity and our reputation.
Okay. Mr. Anderson?
I am, um, extremely supportive of your project. I don't like the language that was used because we're creating a new entertainment...
District.
Not a district. We're... We have a text amendment that is now, uh, creating multipurpose entertainment establishment.
Okay.
And it's not you. going for. Uh, we're not trying to appease for it to be like something that is a nightclub. Um, we, we, we're looking to facilitate healthy, healthy and fun events in this space. And I know that sounds really cliche. I know that's what I'm supposed to say right now. But my reputation means a lot. And I know that attaching myself to something that will put people at risk, sure, late nights, 12 to 2, you're talking late, early mornings. We, we, we have a, our integrity, our reputation means a lot. And we, and we want to make sure that we keep everybody safe and keep everybody, um, in, in the right taste of what we're trying to produce. So when you walk into this space, it's not going to feel like a nightclub. It's not going to sound like a nightclub. Um, of course, some of the events will be happening during the time of, that you would think that it's kind of like a club type of feel. But, um, I do understand that dirty context that comes with a nightclub. I get it. And I do understand the, the apprehensiveness to say, well, yeah, let them do that. But I can, I'm guaranteeing you here that what we're going to do is, is going to be in taste, it's going to be in pride, it's going to be connected to our integrity and our reputation.
Commissioner Anderson?
I am extremely supportive of your project. I don't like the language that was used because we're creating a new entertainment.
District.
Not a district. We, we have a text amendment that is now, uh, creating multipurpose entertainment establishment. And it's not you. It's what else this opens the doors for. It is so, um, it's broad and I understand this isn't you.
Sure, sure, sure.
But this is something for the staff, I think, to create a definition that makes sense. I mean, under this, this looks like I could bring live dancing downtown. Dancers, not necessarily the kind of dancers that we might want. I mean, it doesn't say that. It says may include live or recorded entertainment. Um, now, we may have somewhere else that prohibited in B4. I'm not sure. But this definition, I just look at it and I'm going, oh, my goodness. So, um, I don't know what the staff has to say about that. I had some conversations earlier. Uh, that's my only concern.
Sure.
Not your conditional use, not your use, not where it is. I think, uh, these kinds of programs and services would benefit our community.
Sure.
So I don't want to hold it up necessarily. But I don't like the text amendment description.
Gotcha, gotcha.
And I don't know what that means for you. But I think it's putting this back on planning and zoning to come up with something a little more specific. And maybe you're asking us to do that.
That'd be fantastic.
Well, I don't know how we do that. But I, I certainly think we have to have more conversation. If we're going to create a different definition of a type of establishment that's going to be downtown, then I think we have to be very clear and provide some parameters. And there are a few here, but I think there probably need to be more.
I'm a little confused. I mean, this text amendment allows this to become a conditional use. So any sort of use that falls under this would still come before us, right?
Yes, it would.
So, I mean, we can take that discretionary, you know, sort of thing at this table right here.
Okay.
It's not like it's an approved use. It's, it's a conditional use. So any conditional use has to come before us and get approved by city council. So, you know, I know where you're going with the dancers and everything. Yeah, I agree.
Well, I mean, it's not just.
Whatever events.
No, I, I understand.
That's a far out event.
No, 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 I understand. It's the same thing. You know, I agree with you. But I mean, we have all kinds of uses under different zoning, you know, locations that have similar conditional use requirements. And that's the reason is because we want to have the discretion to approve it or disapprove it.
So essentially, you're saying, uh, and a description like this does not open doors for businesses that we don't want to see downtown?
I mean, it, it, it all depends on what, uh, you know, what our decision is, right? I'm, I'm hoping the people at this board have the self-interest of the city of Waukegan in mind when, when they sit here. So I hope we make the correct decision on what we want downtown and we don't want downtown, you know? It's just allowing that conversation to be had at this table.
Mr. Grimes?
In this particular case, it says, you know, in the right up, that this aligns with the vision or what's going to happen in downtown Waukegan. So as far as from the city's vantage point, I understand what Commissioner Anderson is saying. But for this particular case, it aligns with the vision and what we hope for, what the Waukegan downtown and attracting other businesses, et cetera, et cetera. So I don't know how you walk that fine line.
I think, I think it's going to be up to Carlos and his, uh, and what he wants to see there. And it's going to rely tremendously on, on Carlos Smith to be very selective on what kind of events he wants there.
Absolutely. I, I, you gotta, you guys gotta realize this too. The, the vantage point of being downtown Waukegan, it's, is I couldn't hide any type of event that I would throw that would kind of put my business at risk and obviously the city at risk. Well, maybe, maybe not the city at risk, but my business or whatever comes with that. So, I mean, I'm conscious of everything. And that text amendment, um, just to give you a little bit more confidence in it, it was, it was formed because we, the banquet hall idea didn't allow me to do tickets at the door. And what I wanted to make sure was when an event happened at the Genesee Theater and that concert let out, I wanted to be sure that I could maybe capture a few of those people leaving out. Uh, so that banquet hall structure didn't give me that opportunity. Um, and that's kind of where we, where we kind of formed the text amendment and made it, made it kind of universal. And I get it. It's very courageous to tackle something like that because maybe the next person takes advantage of maybe a loophole in that description. So I get it. Uh, but as far as my business goes and what we'll be doing is trying to set the example for that text amendment. So for, and obviously this is the first time somebody would be under that description. Um, and we would, we would, we would, with pride, try our best and do our best to, uh, hold that description to a high standard. So one, so no one circumvents it and takes advantage of it.
Anybody else have any comments or questions for the petition?
You know, I think it's great. I'm with Ben. I mean, this is exactly what we want in downtown Waukegan because, you know, after 5 o'clock downtown Waukegan is dead. So this is the type of activity we need.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah, I agree. The vitality that it would bring to the community is, stands for itself. Godspeed to you.
Thank you, thank you.
Great. Just tell me, could you just tell me how loud you think it will be? Like, like what?
That's a good one. Um.
I don't, I don't, even if you tell me.
You want like deci, you want like decibel?
I don't know, because that's not going to mean anything to me.
Do you want decibel levels here?
I'm walking down the streets.
Uh, you know, what, what we're doing, of course, with my construction team, sound is important. I'll be, be really honest with you. We're spending a lot of money in that area, only because we have neighbors on both sides. And right next to us is a banquet hall. Um, so that's something that we're doing very, very, uh, we're diligently trying to make sure that the sound doesn't seep out. But it, it, it will be loud in the space for sure, no question. But not into the street loud, though.
That's a good enough answer. Thanks.
Absolutely.
Good. I live at the end of the block. I hope.
Yeah, right there. That house right there.
Yeah, yeah, he's there, he's there. Yeah, yeah.
I can hear your door, man.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I've been there, so.
Yeah.
He also does, uh, heating and air conditioning and.
Oh, nice, 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 nice.
Anyway, no commercials, please.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's all residential, yeah.
Okay, is there anybody else here who would like to speak out in support of this request? Please come up to the.
Who, me?
Yeah, whoever. Yeah, I believe I've already sworn you in.
Yes, sir.
Please come up to the microphone, state your name and your, for the record, your affiliation with the project.
My name is Vestoria Parker and Carlos Smith is my son.
Hey, great job.
And you're Benjamin Grimes?
Yes, ma'am.
I, I appreciate your words that you spoke about my son because you took them right out of my mouth. And I don't even have nothing else to say. No, I'm just kidding. But yeah.
He's like my son, too.
Yes, I appreciate you.
I have a son-in-law who's my son. He's 54, but he's my son.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
By blood, but by, and I, forgive me, Mr. Chairman, I'm speaking out of line. I'm sorry, but you did invoke.
Thank you. You, you were okay. You did good. I appreciate that. I'm just excited that, um, I can see him, uh, launch his, you know, business and, and do his thing because he's been very passionate with it. Um, he's an awesome person. He loves the community. He's Lake County crazy. He's all over the place. And he's that way for other people in their places. And, um, his dad and I, uh, partner with them. It, it's time for you to arrive in your own. And so I'm behind him 100%. I support him. I will be like a security guard in the business. Um, to the young lady's point, um, the multipurpose reference in the text amendment, we got that. We will have that. We, I assure you of that. Whatever that is and was when it was crossing your mind, um, that we will have that. And it will be all right. And I just appreciate you guys. And that's all I have to say. That thank you so much for the decision before you even make it. Thank you.
Recommendation.
Commissioner Anderson?
I just want to emphasize that I am not against this project. And I am familiar with what you've done for the community. I follow you. Um, so it is, and I just want to reiterate, this is not you and I, it's not you at all.
I understand.
It was, it was truly the language in the text amendment. And I'm very excited about the project. Okay. So I just wanted to say that. And if there was any, any, um, question about that.
Thank you, Commissioner Anderson. There was another person that wanted to speak in support of the project? Please, please do. Please come up to the microphone. And I would like to swear you in, please.
Okay.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay, please speak into the microphone.
Awesome. Hi, guys. How are you?
Your name and your affiliation with the project.
Sure. My name is Alyssa Pimentel. I'm actually coming to you from an angle that is somebody who is working with Carlos on this, is kind of a staffer. So I know he kind of gave you his idea and his parents' support, which is great. But I think it's really important for you guys to see on the inside what we're doing and how we support Carlos. So I saw real estate. I am also very actively involved in the city of Waukegan. My reputation is super important to me and I love the city. So when he came to me, mind you, I've known him for a while due to some events, and he's like, I need people. I need staff. And I'm like, okay, well, if I'm going to put my name on this, how can I make sure that my reputation as somebody who sells homes in this area to people who would say, hey, come live in Waukegan? How can I make sure that my reputation is safe? And so I wanted to also dig into Carlos's train of thought when he was coming up with this whole thing. And he was just so smart and really, he really wanted to make sure that the people he brought on were quality people, people who really knew what they were doing. And I said, well, what's our expectation? How can we turn this to something that's not going to ruin anybody's reputation or that is a safe place? And he goes, listen, listen, I'm not messing around. I got the money to put into it. And the vision is this for the community, for the kids, for the multimedia. You guys know how many followers this guy has. It's immense. And it's great. And people really look up to him. And so do other really amazing community activists. So I think it's a really great space and it's something that I'm really excited to be a part of and that I think everybody else is really excited to be a part of, especially being millennials who want to put a really positive stamp on the community. So that's all I really wanted to say.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anybody else here who would like to speak out in support of this request? Yes, please come forward, Alderman. And I would like to swear you in, please. Raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I affirm.
Okay, please state your name and your affiliation with the project. We all know who you are.
Uh, I'm Dr. I'm Dr. Rudell Kirkwood. I'm the Alderman of the 4th Ward where this project's going to take place. Uh, I've had the pleasure of working with Carlos, uh, on several occasions. So anything that's going to be positive in the 4th Ward, especially downtown, I'm going to be supportive of that, especially with the young people involved. So, uh, I've had the occasion to be on his show, uh, on one occasion. So I'm in support of what he's attempting to do downtown.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anybody else here who would like to speak out in support of this request? Okay. Is there anybody here who would like to speak out in opposition to this request? Okay, uh, city staff. Do we have, we don't have any letters on this one? No letters of support or objection? Okay, I'd like to ask the city staff for their recommendation?
Good evening again, commissioners. Thank you again for, uh, lining up here tonight. We'll talk about these, this application in two parts. First and foremost, the text amendment. Uh, as maybe you have noticed, the text amendment was a bit of a group exercise in trying to define really a new business model for many of us. Certainly, as, as many or most of us know here, Mr. Smith is a well-known, uh, community leader. His, uh, community presence in the Crazy Riot Show is well-regarded and it is, you know, its reputation is, is very upstanding. Um, in terms of, in terms of accommodating really three, uh, existing uses in the B4 district, uh, which are both either permitted or conditional, as Carlos noted, it was a bit of a challenge to get the right fit amongst existing, uh, existing categories that would best incorporate, again, something of a new, uh, model. Uh, as many of you have seen in the text amendment application, you know, in the description of the text amendment request, it is a bit broad. And certainly in discussing with Director Kishore Lepper, we, uh, at your, at your direction are happy to, with an approval to council, amend it or tighten the language meeting with, uh, Mr. Smith to ensure that we're incorporating , uh, more specifics of his, you know, of his. Certainly, I can already think that the focus on the, on the youth involvement and the giving back from that component, uh, can certainly tighten it a bit further to eliminate some of the perceived concerns. In terms of the perceived, you know, obviously the concerns, uh, in moving into the conditional use permit, really, in our staff recommendation, the conditions that we tried to incorporate were intended to address some of those further. As was noted, we have a couple of ways that we think to, uh, separate this from some of those potentially problematic uses. Uh, and I'll just kind of note a couple of them that are encompassed in the, uh, conditions. One, noise. A, as was noted, hey, how loud is this going to be? Well, certainly, we, we noted that noise cannot, it can't be audible from the street, you know? And, and we appreciate, obviously, Mr. Smith's assurances that that will be upheld. Hours, you know, differentiating from something like a nightclub. This is not having regular Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, you know, 8:00, 8:00 PM to, to 2:00 AM hours. It is, you know, an event-based, it's got, obviously, daytime operations that we think are appropriate for the, you know, obviously, the other uses such as children being, children being on site. Uh, in, in terms of liquor license, this would be geared towards certainly a banquet facility, not a pouring license, to not be, uh, problematically approaching a nightclub. And not necessarily problematically, but certainly, as we know, a nightclub encompasses other, um, facets and stipulations like security. Um, there is also the ability to review every 90 days for the first year. And so whether it was this use or another, an imitator that wanted to misapply this category, uh, we believe that that is going to be, not only be a standard that we, we are looking to set, uh, moving forward for other uses, but we think that that will provide, uh, provide some protections that can ensure we are getting the right uses as the, as the applicants, uh, describe and which you as the, as the commissioners and the aldermen are anticipating when, when or if approving. Um, and I'm happy to answer any other questions about conditions. As you see, some of them are, are pairing, um, what we had stipulated for cap in terms of banquet uses. Uh, and again, you know, whether we'd like to amend the text amendment to also include some of the community aspects a little further with the, with, uh, youth involvement, we are happy to incorporate as, as directed.
I have a question about the whole liquor, uh, aspect. Uh, you're saying that this is, the liquor is just going to be, um, provided at specific events, special events. So it's not going to be the kind of situation where somebody can come in off the street and, uh, walk in and buy a shot and a beer?
Absolutely, absolutely correct. We will never just have liquor just, uh, in there for people just to walk in and get. It's, it's event-based, absolutely.
Okay. And, um, as far as the noise, now you're saying the noise cannot be heard from the street, okay? I don't know how soundproof the building is. And I'm sure there is going to be, if you have loud music going on, I'm sure there is going to be, um, music that you can hear from outside.
Mm-hmm.
So I'm not sure how strict that requirement is because, um, you know, in most places that have entertainment, you can hear, you know, bands or things like that. You can hear it outside.
Yeah, yeah.
So I'm just wondering if city staff can tell me, um, how strict that requirement is going to be, how it's going to be measured? Because I just don't, I'm just wondering if it's possible for them to have bands and events like that without having some music filtering out into the street.
Just to piggyback off that, I, I mean, I have the same question. That's why I asked the noise question, because I'm guessing you can hear the Genesee sometimes outside on the streets in a loud concert. So is that too restrictive, which is a weird question, but?
Yeah.
So the city has a general noise ordinance. Um, we think of it more in terms of neighborhood parties or cars, that kind of thing. Um, the response is complaint-based and it's a police department response and a ticket. So if somebody complains about the noise emanating from a facility, a vehicle, whatever, the police can respond to that and issue a ticket if they feel a ticket is appropriate. I'm not an expert on that, on that ordinance, but I believe it is, um, being able to hear the sound 50 feet away from the source. Um, so that's, you know, not hearing it like you're next to it, it's hearing it. Um, but I can refresh myself on that. Do you know that ordinance exactly? Okay, thank you. Um, so.
I don't believe there are any residences within 50 feet of the, that space. So that wouldn't be an issue there.
Um, so another business owner, you know, if they complained, then they would call the police and make a complaint that way. Um, we have noise ordinances related to zoning that are for, um, basically consistent sound in industrial and commercial districts, um, measured at a decibel level. And that would have to be actually measured. So it wouldn't be an event-oriented kind of thing. So the way it would probably operate in reality is if there were a complaint, the police would come out and say, hey, we've had a complaint, quiet it down. And then Carlos, I'm sure would be super cooperative and, um...
Not his mother will get involved.
Right. Mom will turn it down just like she did when he was younger. Yes.
Okay. Do any of the commissioners have any questions for city staff? Any other questions or comments?
Mr. Cherk, I ask one more. So I just want to make sure I understand. I, I like the kind of 90-day review thing. And I was going to ask if that's the first time we've ever put it in. It is, it's not the first time?
Uh, I believe that it's been stipulated in specifically other banquet facilities, is I believe where that was pulled from.
Do we know, has it ever?
Uh, and other uses, excuse me.
Has it ever been executed? Like, has anybody ever brought it here? Because I've, I've heard us complain before about something went through and we never see it kind of come back. So, and I don't know that I need to, but just, it's, it's an interesting... Maybe the real question is like, what's the city process to make sure that that happens? Or are we committing that we're doing it? Or are we just leaving it out there as an option? Then who makes the decision to bring it to planning and zoning or not?
Uh, it's the option for us to do it if you request it or if staff hears complaints. Um, we have done it before. It's usually been on auto repair facilities, but it's not an uncommon.
uncommon condition, and I'm hoping that we start including, if not the same language, something similar to that in each conditional use permit.
So Noel, you don't have a decibel rating for entertainment-type venues?
We don't.
You don't, yeah.
Not at the present time. We are just kicking off our zoning ordinance rewrite, though, so if you have a recommendation for that, I'm sure the team will be talking to all of you during that process.
Ohioland Park has Ravinia, and a lot of neighbors, they enjoy the music, so.
Sure. Many, many years ago, I sat in my front yard listening to Ravinia every night they performed, so. Thomas just pointed out also the second condition, for the first year of operation, a brief report on any incidents or police calls will be provided to the Planning and Zoning Commission on a quarterly basis. So we'll reach out to the police department, request a report of calls, police and fire calls, it would be all dispatch calls to that location, and you'd be able to review that, and that may help you make a determination as to whether you wanted to have Carlos come in and have a conversation about anything, or if any of you experience anything or hear anything in the community.
Is, is that a new condition, or has that been put in before? Because I haven't been on the commission for that long, but I don't know that I've seen that happen either necessarily.
This particular condition is one of the newer ones, and it's, it's more related to some of the banquet kinds of facilities that we've had. I, I'm trying to start having us use consistent conditions generally, and then have sort of specific ones for, for each project, so you may begin to see this one more often, or something similar.
Any more questions for city staff? Any more questions for the petitioner? I do have a question. Mr. Smith, you've seen the recommended conditions of approval?
Yes, well.
You've read them, and you're, you're aware of what they are?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Do you feel that you can conform with these conditions?
Absolutely.
No problems with any of them?
Not at all.
Okay, and the way that it, that it's stated, they are recommended conditions of approval, this is what city staff is recommending, so I would like to ask that if we make a motion to approve, which I'm suspecting we will, that we make it subject to the conditions of approval as recommended by the city staff. Okay, any other questions? If not, I would like to ask for a motion, either to recommend approval or to recommend denying approval.
I recommend approval, subject to the conditions stated by staff.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Grimes, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Bill.
Chairman, text amendment, vote first, please.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, thank you, thank you. We have two items here. Thank you for bringing that up. Okay, the first one is going to be a vote on item 5.2, zoning calendar number 2641, a request by the petitioner, Carlos Smith, for a text amendment to sections 8.5-4 and 13.2 of the Waukegan zoning ordinance allowing multipurpose entertainment establishment as a conditional use in the B-4 district. Commissioner Grimes?
Yes, so moved.
Make a motion to recommend approval.
Yes.
Okay, and, and we're going to reword it, because that has nothing to do with the conditions, that was the second item.
Thank you.
Okay, and we have a second by Commissioner Bill. Any discussion on this motion? Okay, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Hints?
Yes.
Hoag?
Yes.
Grimes?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes, with a caveat that I'd still like staff to take a look at the definition, not for this project, but in general.
Rivera?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes, motion carries.
Congratulations.
Item 5.3, we're halfway there, zoning calendar number 2642, this is a request by the petitioner, A Crazy Place LLC and Facet Holdings LLC, for a conditional use permit for a multipurpose entertainment establishment for the location on this 208 North Genesee Street. Do we have a motion?
I still move.
Motion by Commissioner Anderson to recommend.
The approval of the conditional use permit for.
Crazy Place.
I'm sorry.
Crazy Place.
I've got it, A Crazy Place LLC at 208 North Genesee Street.
Subject to the commission, the conditions?
Subject to the conditions that were given to them by planning and zoning staff.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hints. Do we have any further discussion on this motion? Commissioner Rivera?
No. Okay, no, I second that.
Rivera seconded it before I got it.
That was Commissioner.
Yeah.
Okay, it's Commissioner Rivera that seconded it. Okay, no further discussion, roll call vote, please.
Hints?
Yes.
Hoag?
Yes.
Grimes?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Rivera?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes, motion carries.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you guys so much, yes.
Good luck with your project, and the next step again, Noel?
It'll be the same date and time, the Community Development Committee of the City Council on December 6th at 5:00 PM in this room.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Noel.
Okay, and that is all the new business, there's no other new businesses that we need to discuss? Informational items, I see none. I would just like to make a request and a comment. You know, we've been very fortunate over the last couple of years to always have a city attorney present at all of the meetings, and, you know, to me, it's always been a very important situation for us to have legal representation at a meeting, you know, this is a legal body, a legally convened meeting, that is of extreme importance for the city and the future of the city, and we have a legal obligation to conduct legal hearings on these requests, and there are times when, you know, in the, how many years I've been on this, chairman of this commission, about 12 years? There have been times when I just had a dilemma, and I wasn't sure which way to move on something, and having Doug, our, our previous attorney here, was always such a blessing, because there were times when I could just lean over and ask him, you know, what do we do? We want to make sure that everything that we do here is conducted legally and correctly, okay, for the benefit of the city, for the benefit of the citizens, for the benefit of the, the petitioners. So we want to make sure that, that we have the legal counsel at our, at our side here so that we don't make any errors based on our lack of understanding or knowledge of the, the laws or the ordinances, so I'd like to ask city staff, if you could please convey my request, and I, I believe that the rest of the commission is probably.
Totally agree.
In support of this position, we really would like to see regular, and I mean, constant, legal participation in this process, because it is just so important. And, and one thing I would really hate to do is to have us, have a situation where we do something that negates the action that we took at a meeting because we failed to follow a certain guideline or a certain procedure, and that is something I would really not like to see happen, so if you could please bring that message to the mayor, and if necessary, city council, you know, that we really feel it's important, I would, I would really appreciate it, and the commission would really appreciate it.
I will convey that message.
Thank you very much, and, and I would like to ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Grimes?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rivera. Roll call vote, please.
Hints?
I know we don't, I'm aware of that.
Yes.
Hoag?
Yes.
Grimes?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Rivera?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes, motion carries, meeting is adjourned. There are reasons why I'm trying to be extremely careful, okay?